Since we've got a hush in the crowd, we'll go ahead and get started with our invocation from Pastor Dwight Moody from Erlanger Baptist Church.
Let's pray. Father, the weather has already settled upon us, and the news of tomorrow doesn't look much better with upwards of 10, maybe inches of snow. I pray, Father, that you would protect our community and protect our people. Be with them as they travel home tonight, and be with us all and our families as we go about business tomorrow. We pray for our community, we pray for our people, especially those without homes. God, we thank you for this gathering. I thank you for the council who, with every fiber of their being, desire to do what's best. And I pray for wisdom, I pray for counsel, I pray for discernment and clarity. God, I pray that you would guide their steps as they do what's best for our community, and I pray for our community as we seek to do what's best for us all. Father, we love you, we thank you for your love. It's in the name of Jesus that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Now call the March 3, 2015, regular meeting of city council to order. Can I ask that we please rise to pledge allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll ask the assistant city clerk to take roll call.
Mr. Meyer?
Present.
Mr. Burke?
Here.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Here.
Ms. Skidmore?
Here.
Ms. Sudcamp?
Ms. Pitts?
Here.
Ms. Kyle?
Here.
Ms. Cahill?
Here.
Mr. Cahill?
Here.
Mr. Skidmore?
Here.
Mr. Blankenship?
Here.
Mr. Howard?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. First item on the agenda is our minutes. You've received a copy of the minutes from the February 3 regular council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Ms. Kyle, seconded by Mr. Burke. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The next item is our approval of the agenda. This is something that we typically don't do, but it is something that is part of Robert's Rules of Order. You've received an agenda and of the March 3 regular council meeting. Are there any additions or any additions at this time, Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, I have asked that three ordinances be placed on for first reading tonight. They are not on the agenda. Ordinance number one would be to authorize city council to approve Frank Wickman as an employee of council. Ordinance number two would be to provide that the city attorney shall be deemed a non-elected public official appointed by the mayor subject to approval of council. And ordinance number three would prohibit the payment of any funds from the city budget to any attorneys other than council employees and the duly-appointed city attorney. I would ask those be added to the agenda for first reading tonight.
I'm just writing this down, that's a lot.
And I would make a motion that those be so added.
And I'll second that.
So, all right, any discussion? Mr. Howard?
May I come to the mayor?
All right.
Most of the time, it is good to be with my colleagues agreeing on such issues, potential and protective to the city. Then there are times like tonight when you are at odds and you have to stand alone and address council. 11 to 1, or 10 to 2. I suppose the odds are clearly against my favor. So I'll plead my cause, hoping that people will at least understand where I come from. And in the end, our relationship will not be tarnished. If we're completely honest about this, if this was anybody else besides Frank Wickman, we would not be in this room today. But perhaps it is a good thing we are. For all of you who don't know, and I imagine you've taken council's first shock, I am one of those who are opposed to these ordinances. I look out here in the audience, and I'm proud to see all the support here for Frank Wickman. Frank, you have served our city faithfully these past 49 years, and I have grown to rely and prosper in the city government through your counsel and your direction, and I will be forever in your debt. Mayor Hermes, however, has chosen another direction for legal advice, which by law is his preference. These ordinances address this issue by allowing council to appropriate an amount no less than $30,000 of taxpayer money to hold on to your legal advice in the upcoming fiscal year. And deep down, I cannot vote yes on that ordinance. Two attorneys, each one of our scheduled meetings and committee meetings, with one representing the executive branch and another representing the legislative branch, makes no legal sense to me. My second reason for not voting for this ordinance is fear and anger. People can deny this all they want about these ordinance, but they were drafted in fear and anger. Fear of losing our past and fear of what lies ahead in Erlanger's future. That's what these ordinances say underneath all the words. Fear and anger, and that's just not me. I want to look forward to the best our city has vision, and I believe with new faces, new ideas, and bold initiatives, everyone here should be excited. The past is over, the future is bright. Let's get a hold of that and not get left behind. My third reason for voting no on these ordinance tonight, Tyson Hermes. Tyson, in the November election, I voted for Tom Rouse, and like the majority of the people in this room, I was kind of bummed out when he lost. You know, there are still people feeling that same way today. They want to see you fail and fail bad. But for the betterment of the city of Erlanger, I also want to see you fail, and I want to see you make mistakes, because I know it's the only way that you'll grow in this environment as you move forward with your dreams and your vision for Erlanger. My advice to you is lean heavy and depend on people like Mark Fields, Missy Andrus, and the leadership team they have developed. Together with their assistance and advice, you will go far in this position. I can remember countless times as young mayor, I can remember countless times as young mayor Mark Otto would do things foolishly and inappropriately. And I hope J.D. remembers the time Mark brought the pink flamingos into the council chambers. So, and these were, he would do things foolishly and inappropriately, but there were people in Paul Hahn, Kenny Ayden, Bill Shire, Wilma LeBeire, Frank Wickman, and Jim Beaux, always there to get him straightened out and back on the right track. And through their leadership experience, Mayor Otto matured successfully in his mayoral I now ask that you do the same, Tyson, with a team assigned to you and all those that you bring aboard, and never hesitate as a member of council for their assistance when needed. The advice they give can be a tremendous benefit to the success of your tenure. My fourth reason for voting against this ordinance, council shortsightedness. Council, I'm afraid, has a bad case of sometimes a short-term memory loss. I recall a little bit over a year ago when the fire department was looking for a new fire chief to replace the retiring chief, Terry Allen. And everyone, including myself, thought that the young boy who grew up in Erlanger, all his life with over 20 years' experience in fire safety, Todd Scholkers, was a shoe-in. But we got another Todd that took that position, a relatively newcomer to the city of Erlanger. And many of us on council at the time thought that was also a big mistake. But Todd Whitaker has proven us wrong. He has a vision for the fire department and moves forward to see that vision through successfully. I might add, he's built a leadership team that works like a well-oiled machine, and with all the other departments in the city of Erlanger, it does just as well. You see council, I see Tyson the same way. A newcomer, green behind the ears, inexperienced, much like Mayor Otto was in his early years. Like Mark Otto, that council gave him a chance to develop his vision, so allowed Tyson to build his leadership team that works best for him. But more importantly, as he matures, let us allow him to build upon the legacy left behind by our past mayors, Fred Thomas, Mark Otto, and Tom Rouse. It's true, we had a right to question, we do have a right to question his decisions, but we do not have a right to condemn them. Only working together can we grow a strong city government. These ordinances, if enacted, will only create a larger chasm between the Erlanger branch and the legislative branch of our city government. And I ask, how is that healthy in any way for our city? Finally, in the Bible, there is a verse of scripture that I hold dear to my heart that says, "There is no fear in love, but perfect love casts out fear." I love my city, and I would fight for it tooth and nail if I thought its well-being and safety were any way in jeopardy. But I don't simply see it like this. All I see is fear and anger, which is leading to confusion, and I have never, nor will I ever, vote yes on any legislation based on this scenario, which would create more of the same negatives we're dealing with tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Mr. Mayor.
Any other discussion? Mr. Meyer?
Ms. Kyle, go ahead.
I just want to say that I disagree with Bill, and we can still stay friends even though we disagree. I do not see these ordinances as coming from fear and anger. I've been silent for a long time over these two months and have not made a statement, but I'm ready to make one now. And I feel these ordinances are a matter of principle, integrity, loyalty, and for me, admiration of a gentleman who has so much wisdom that I told him the other day, I said, "Frank, you have forgotten more than we," I mean, he has forgotten more than we'll ever know. And that's just exactly how I feel. I don't feel afraid, I don't feel angry. I have thought this over very much. It does upset me, but I'm not angry, and I do feel like I will vote for those ordinances. So, just wanted to let my...
Yeah, other discussion? Mr. Meyer?
Out of the three items that we have that we're up to add to the agenda tonight, one of them I actually, I do support, and that is the creating, changing the position of city attorney to a non-elected officer. There are a few pieces in there that I think I'd like to change, but I think we can do that, and I would support a first reading on that. The other two I don't support, and, well, one of my, I could potentially support, but that's the actual creation of the city council employee. As far as I'm aware, or at least, I've not seen where we actually have the rules and procedures and how that would work. And I think there's some, and to create it specifically for a specific person, I think, I personally feel is a little short-sighted. Not to say that Mr. Wickman wouldn't be hired into that role, but I think having it be, you know, a little more generic so that other people, if we were hiring a city attorney, we wouldn't just assign that out, we'd like to look at multiple people. So for that reason, I don't support that, and I would like to actually refer that to a committee. I'd like to make a motion that that gets referred to a committee for discussion and continued development of that ordinance.
We have a motion on the floor right now.
But I think that referring to a committee is a higher-ranking motion.
Okay. Okay.
Is that correct?
All right.
Yeah, I think that your motion is probably not timely right now. It should be brought up. If you amend the agenda, then when the ordinance is brought up, you can move at that time, as you see. So, on the other, the restricting of the mayor to spend money for the council attorney, I do not support that at all. Do not support a first reading or a second reading or, you know, any discussion on that matter. And as I understand, and that's really because of the way that I understand the laws as they're written, and that would be us being in executive branch, and we're not permitted to interfere or be involved in any executive functions. As I understand, KRS 83A 130, section 8, it says, "All bonds, notes, contracts, and written obligations of the city shall be made and executed by the mayor's designated executive function." And KRS 83A 13011 says, "The council shall not perform any executive functions except those assigned to it by statute." And I'm not aware that we're permitted to do that, interfere with that executive function. And that's the reason that I oppose that item.
All right.
Just a couple of points. Yeah, thank you. Just a couple of points. I said when I was announcing the ordinance to employ Frank Wickman as city attorney, as council employee. The ordinance is written in more generic terms than that really provides. Okay. So I may have misspoke, as I said, I want to clarify that. Secondly, on the budgetary ordinance, there's no doubt in the KRS that the city council is the one that has authority over passing the budget, and therefore, we do have the right to do that. There are numerous Attorney General opinions, for example, that specifically state that while the mayor has the right to contract, he can only contract to the extent the city council gives him budgetary authority to do so. He cannot expend monies without budgetary authority. So whether you agree or disagree with the ordinance, it's clearly within our legal permission.
And the reason that I, I guess I would disagree with that is that we don't budget at the line item level, we budget at the department level.
Right, but we have the authority to do both.
All right. Any other discussion?
I'd like to know who's sitting next to you.
Oh.
I second that.
Yeah, sorry.
We've got a guy here talking, we don't know who he is.
Excuse me. May I introduce Mr. Todd McMurtry? He is an attorney with Garner and Kearns. Would you like to?
Right, I'm an attorney. The mayor asked me to come here to assist him on a temporary basis, as city attorney, to provide guidance, and that's why I'm here. And I currently serve as the city attorney for Fort Wright and Park Hills, and so I'm familiar with these issues. And I'm so used to answering those questions, that's probably why I just jumped in and answered it. So I apologize for not introducing myself before that point.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Mr. Burke.
Mayor.
Ms. Sudcamp?
I wasn't going to speak tonight because I have a tendency to get worked up. Those of you that know me, and a lot of you do, first and foremost, thank you so much for caring for the city of Erlanger, no matter why you're here. And we are devastated that Frank was let go. There's nothing we can do about it. But your presence here tonight, you have no idea what a message it sends to this whole Without getting, I'm so frustrated. We have all extended, and Bill, I still love you, honey, but you're wrong. This gentleman to my right, and he cannot deny this, we met prior to his being sworn in, one-to-one, and I offered my friendship and my support to this gentleman, and I meant it, because that's the kind of person that I am. But I also told him that I could be a real B if he started messing with my city. Well, guess what? I'm in B mode now. He has disrespected every single one of us. He has disrespected council members while the cameras were running. He is not willing to work with council as a whole. Oh, yeah, he'll say, "Oh, I'll meet with you anytime, one-on-one behind closed doors." Never, as a body, has he been willing to meet with us, to give us his agenda. How in the world can we work with a man like that? This has gone far beyond Frank, far beyond Frank. He, a few council meetings ago, he disgustingly embarrassed a gentleman that he had just given a 10-year service pin to for serving on one of our boards. He handed him the pin, then he returned to the dais and announced to the world that the man no longer had held that position, with the gentleman still sitting right there, and announced that he had someone, a friend, that was going to take his place. And guess what? He had sworn his friend in the night before, without council's knowledge. Okay? This is what's going on here. This is nothing, there is anger. Bill, I agree with you on there, there is anger, because we have a gentleman that has come before us saying he wants to be transparent. He has inferred that the council was not transparent before, because we don't get on camera and act like fools like so many of the other cities do. We got more class than that. We have council meeting, committee meetings, they are open to the public, they are not private, they are not behind closed doors. Okay? And we have our agreements and disagreements behind closed doors, like professionals should do, so that when we come to you before you with a city idea, or project, or decision, and no, hell no, there's 12 of us, we never always agree. No, don't, and I'll be the first one to admit to that. But we agree to disagree, just like Bill and I are doing. We're adults here. We demand respect, and we are not getting it. And I could go on and on about, well, let's see, let's say one more thing.
Patty, can we try to keep it germane to the motion that's on the floor?
You ask if anybody wanted to speak, sir?
We have a motion on the floor.
See what I mean?
There is an opportunity to speak later, but we do have a motion on the floor regarding the agenda this evening. So is that all, then, Patty?
I guess it has to be, doesn't it?
It does not.
Well, good, then I'll continue.
Are there any other discussions regarding the motion that's on the floor?
What actually is the motion?
To add the three...
To amend the agenda, to add the ordinances.
I call for the motion.
Second, all ready, correct?
It's been seconded, we're discussing it now. If there are no other discussions, I would ask that we vote, signify your approval with aye. Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed say no.
No.
Let's take a roll call.
Explain what, they were voting aye to add him to the agenda, right?
That's correct.
No, not to add him, okay. Because I think some people didn't hear that.
Ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
Ms. Skidmore?
Aye.
Ms. Cahill?
No.
Ms. Sudcamp?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer?
No.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, the ayes have it. We'll add those items to the agenda. Next item on our agenda are special presentations. Are there any other, are there any special presentations this evening? I don't believe there are. All right. Then the next item is the mayor's report. I realize many of you are here this evening to discuss the termination of our city attorney contract. Please understand, we have other items on our agenda this evening. We've done our best to limit the length of the meeting this evening to get the public comment portion of the meeting, to get to that public comment portion as quickly as possible. Please keep in mind, this is a business meeting of the city. We keep it civil, we keep it professional. This is not a public forum to air your grievances or a town hall meeting. We will get to each person that has signed up to speak. I would just like to ask that if someone has said what you want to say, similar to what you want to say, prior to you, that you would just echo their comments. Regarding the termination of Mr. Wickman's contract, this is not something I wanted to do. I was hoping to be able to work with Mr. Wickman as our city attorney. As a business owner and builder, I know it's usually better and easier to utilize the systems that are in place when you're starting new work. My decision to hire a new attorney is not a criticism on Mr. Wickman, it is instead my choice to form a relationship with an attorney that has my full trust and confidence. Kentucky law provides that the mayor of the city, in a mayor council form of government, may appoint an attorney of his choice. As mayor, I'm choosing to retain a lawyer of my choice. This is a lawful and even standard practice. The next item on the agenda is the reports of our committee.
I would like to make another motion at this point if I could. I'd like to actually make a motion that we suspend the normal order of business to adopt a different procedure tonight.
The next item on the agenda is the reports of our committee.
I would like to make another motion at this point, if I could. I'd like to actually make a motion that we suspend the normal order of business to adopt a different procedure tonight, due to the large number of people here that do want to be heard regarding Mr. Wickman. I think we should change our order of business to, number one, allow the public to address city council with their concerns, then to allow Mr. Wickman, the city attorney, to give his report and respond to any concerns, then allow the members of council to address those issues, and then proceed with any reading of ordinances on this issue. And I'd move to amend the normal order of business to follow that tonight, before we go into the committee reports.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Blankenship, would you mind repeating that one more time?
Certainly. That we suspend the rules and change our order of business to, number one, allow the public to address their concerns to council. To, number two, allow the city attorney, Mr. Wickman, to provide his report and respond to any concerns that have been expressed. To, number three, allow the city council members to respond to their concerns as expressed by the public and their own concerns. And then, four, to proceed with first reading on the ordinances. The three ordinances I had mentioned, yes. That would be my motion.
I second it.
They're the second, any discussion?
I, and not that I'm opposed to that, but I believe we just made a motion to approve the agenda as laid out.
Actually, I don't think we ever voted on it.
Never did vote on approving the agenda, we voted to add.
To approve the agenda.
No, we had to roll call to add the three ordinances to the agenda. We never did vote to approve the agenda.
That's correct.
That's true.
Thank you. All right.
There's a motion and a second on the floor.
So, we want to go ahead and approve the agenda? Well, let's go ahead and finish this.
Yeah, I would ask that my motion be voted on before we further into the agenda.
My only comment would be that we're addressing, we're not addressing all the items. There are some other... As far as talking about public comment, are you thinking that we would also have the Commonwealth Station comments and other general?
Any public comment, yeah. Anybody who signed up to speak would be allowed to speak at the beginning, would be my thought. There's a lot of people here who want to be heard.
All right.
And our regular business, of course, could proceed thereafter.
Thank you for clarifying that. Any other discussion? Seeing none, have a, we'll vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So we'll use that as our approval of the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Blankenship. So with that, then, we will suspend the rules of the regular agenda. We'll move into public address. Do we have a sign-up list?
Do you still want to approve your agenda? We've not done that.
We just, I believe that was the most we just did, correct?
No, we voted on Randy bringing that front. We have not voted on the agenda yet, making sure that...
That we need to approve an agenda.
We approved the agenda.
We've amended it. I mean, we don't have anything in writing.
I'm just asking.
Okay. Do you have it in writing? Can you share that in writing?
Sure. There's, there it is. I'm trying to get it to you.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
All right, second?
I'll second.
Ms. Skidmore? All in favor, say aye. Excuse me, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? See why I need help? I'm not a parliamentarian. All right, so the, is this your only copy, Mr. Blankenship?
No, I've got extra copies. You can have that. I don't think I wrote much on it.
All right, so.
Here's the order.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and start with the comments on the city attorney. Joan Miles Dunhoff?
Hello, I'm Joan Miles Dunhoff, and I realize I only have two minutes, so what I've written out, I probably can't go through. I am married to John Dunhoff, so I would like all of you people to know something. Back in November, when Mr. Hermes won the election, he started contacting all of the council members to have meet and greet meetings with them. My husband went to that luncheon and came home, and guess what Mr. Hermes had told him at that luncheon? Almost all of the council wants to get rid of Frank Wickman. Throughout the timeline, as the council members talked and found out that wasn't true, well, over half of them, well, half of them, well, I have my reasons. Well, I don't want to air his dirty laundry in public, even though I said I was going to be transparent. This guy has been full of it from the beginning. And Patty was absolutely right. He has not respected any of these people. You may have been elected by a majority, but that was 24 votes. That's not a landslide. These people were elected too, and they deserve more than your respect. I don't know what else you can give them, but they deserve everything you've gotten in some. These people have worked really hard for our city. You moved here three or four years ago. You campaigned for economic development, and you moved your company to Florence? How is that bringing new businesses to Erlanger? And be transparent. Tell me who that guy is that you stumped for at Heritage Days that's going to clean up the railroad trestle that works for the railroad? Give us his name, because this administration has worked for years to get the railroad to clean it up, and they're a private utility. They're not going to do it. I don't think you have anybody. I think you fibbed right out there when you said you had somebody that was going to work with you on that. Be transparent. Tell us everything when we ask you questions, because whenever the voting public allows a government to make decisions in secrecy, we give up our right to choose what is best for ourselves.
Next up is Kevin Schwab.
Thank you, mayor, council. Glad to be here. My name is Kevin Schwab. I live in Erlanger. I've been a resident of Erlanger for about two years now. My wife and I are both personal friends of Tom Rouse. We voted for Tom Rouse, and when Tom Rouse lost, I said, "Lindsey, it's okay. I know Tyson." Tyson and I were in a networking group at one point, not a bad guy, not a bad guy at all. So I'm thinking, we're going to be in good shape. The problem I've run into, Tyson, is that of the two, of the three main platforms that you've ran for, two of them now are not even close to coming to fruition. There's been no transparency, which we were really hoping. And I, again, had told my wife, "This will be great. This will be no problem." And then the other one is a more attractive Erlanger. So far, only thing I've seen is negative press, not attractive at all to us. So, council, mayor, thank you for your time.
Next up is Angie Zieglemeyer.
Good evening, Mayor Hermes and members of council. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. My name is Angie Zieglemeyer. My parents moved to Erlanger when I was one, so I consider myself a lifelong resident. When I bought my first house, I made sure it was in Erlanger. When my husband and I decided to build, I insisted that that house was also in Erlanger. I love Erlanger and am very proud to call Erlanger home. Whether running in my new neighborhood or through my old neighborhood, I'm never worried and feel very safe. I love my city. By no means am I comparing myself to Frank Wickman, but I feel I do have an understanding of his love for this city. Frank has been a lifelong resident. When he built his business, he did so in Erlanger. I've seen him walking along the city streets. I do believe Frank Wickman loves this city. Mayor Hermes, when you were elected, while I did not, while not the person I voted for, I was truly open to this change and believed you would work in the best interest of our city. I believe firing Frank Wickman was a tremendous mistake. Yes, he is a longtime family friend, someone I've known for at least 35 years, and our families have spent much time together. So this is a personal matter to me. Frank is a man of integrity, a man of the community, and a man of this city. But while personal, it goes beyond that. My concern, Mayor Hermes, is that you made this decision to fire Mr. Wickman February 5th. That gave you one month to work with him, not much time, in my opinion. He has held this position of city attorney for 49 years, which proves to me that he works well with others, working with many mayors and many different council members. And while it is within your right to fire and hire the city attorney, I'm concerned with your decision to not discuss with city council first. I'm afraid that your new hire will not have a fraction of the experience of Mr. Wickman. Mr. Wickman is highly esteemed in his role, being called very knowledgeable in city matters. He gives sound advice. You can give him a question, and he doesn't have to research the background. He just knows it. You can give him a question, sorry, he has been referred to as the dean of attorneys for cities. This man obviously knows his stuff. I have to wonder why you would terminate someone with so much knowledge.
Right, Angie, we're out of time. Next up, excuse me if I get this wrong, it's either Ken or Kevin Tabey, Tary?
My name is Hugh Tabey. I'm current secretary for the Florence Lions Club and former treasurer for Florence Lions Club. I'm here to speak on behalf of Honorable Frank Wickman. In 2007, we received a letter from Boone County PVA stating that the state of Kentucky PVA has estimated that the Florence Lions Club property should be taxed. Mind you, for 50-some years, we were not taxed. And their valuation, the annual county and city tax would be approximately $15,000 per year. As the club treasurer, I appealed this decision to the county and state PVA, stating that by IRS codes, we are a nonprofit organization, and therefore we should not be subject to taxes. Unfortunately, our appeal was unsuccessful, and the state PVA insisted that the word "club" puts us in a fraternity classification, and therefore our organization shall be taxed. Quite frankly, we could not afford paying $15,000 per year and continuing our charitable programs as usual. We were faced with two hard decisions: sell the building and forego the income from the hall rentals and events that supports our charitable programs, or cut back the help to many great programs that aid needy families throughout our community. As a suggestion of friend, we seek...
Two minutes. That's it? Do you want to finish the sentence?
He can have my two minutes. I want to hear what he said. I want to hear what he has to finish left.
Next is Kim Romer.
He saved the $15,000. Florence, they didn't have to pay the $15,000.
Hi, my name is Kim Romer, and I have a short message. I question why an inexperienced mayor would choose to fire a legal resource that cannot be replaced by anyone more experienced or knowledgeable. Even if Frank Wickman doesn't agree with your vision for the city of Erlanger, he would not stand in your way, since he doesn't have a vote. Frank would only advise you if what you want to do for the city is legal or not. So what is the motive that you have for removing him?
Next up is Rhonda Ranschall.
My name is Rhonda Ranschall, and I've been a citizen of Erlanger my entire life, 33 years. I've been a voter since I was 18. I vote everybody into office. I don't miss an election. I choose to vote because you all represent me. You represent my family, and you represent the citizens of Erlanger, and I expect you to do the job that we elect you to do. And I'm offended that you would fire a man who clearly, from day one, 49 years ago, has done everything in the best interest of this city. You were elected to do what's in the best interest of us, and that is what we're demanding.
All right, next up is William Dees. On our sign-up sheet, we did specifically say two minutes per speaker.
The administration has no authority to override the city council may adopt the procedure.
No. Here's what it says. It says, "No longer than three minutes." The mayor is able to set the time for how long he wants public comment. This says, "No longer than three minutes." That's what it says. That's what it says. No, I'm not.
That's a document, a procedure that was adopted by the city council, for city council meetings. It is not an executive function, and the mayor has no such authority.
Frank, I'm not going to yell, but I disagree respectfully. I suggest that we don't yell at the chair.
For the record, it does say, "No longer than three minutes."
Blankenship, you made a motion to suspend the rules, is that correct?
Yes, that's the order of agenda, not necessarily an ordinance.
Let's keep it going here. The next name on the list is William B. Saley. Excuse me if I got that wrong.
Randy.
As a business owner and property owner in the city of Erlanger for over 25 years...
Just a moment, sir.
Yes, sir.
Are you ruling that they are limited to two minutes?
Yes.
I appeal that ruling, and I ask for a vote by council on it, because I don't think it's in your authority.
We have... It looks like we have about 17 more speakers on this issue. If we'd like to make it three minutes, that's fine, if...
That'd just make it a lot simpler. Get it done, move on.
I don't have any problem with that. So, I'm sorry, I don't know where he is.
Hugh Tabey.
Would you like to finish for another minute?
Thank you, mayor.
I apologize for not going faster. I'm a Persian hillbilly, and if I go too fast, Chinese comes out. I was saying that we were advised to get counsel, and we did call Mr. Wickman, who has studied the state regulations, and after numerous meetings and correspondence with the state and county PVA, convinced all concerns that being a club has nothing to do with being exempt or not exempt from property taxes. The operation of the club dictates that the classification with the number of members of our club, who volunteer their time, they do not get paid, and actually we pay membership dues to new members. Through his expertise and examination, our club was exempted from taxation. Not only Mr. Wickman did not charge a single dime for his expert services, he did not even accept our... even accept our offer to pay for his travel expenses, postage expenses, and all other expenses that I don't know.
All right.
If it were not for Mr. Wickman, just in the past seven years, we would have paid hundred five thousand dollars in taxes. And that would have kept organizations such as Blind Youth Camp, radio reading services for the blind, Leader Dog Program for the blind, Redwood School...
All right, so we gotta keep moving.
Y'all gonna shut me up?[631.25][631.25](Laughter) If you say...
We really have to keep moving. We have to keep the meeting going. Mr. Salee? Mr. Salee?
I'm Daryl Salee. I've owned business in Erlanger and property for twenty-five years. I've known this man for thirty years in the Lions Club. Not only did he get to tax the bodies for Florence, he got it done for Erlanger, saved us probably, I think it was twenty-two thousand dollars a year, but that's not here or there. I know how intelligent this man is. I know what he's done for the Lions Club, and how much money he's saved us for thirty years. I've watched news. I know what he's saved for numerous cities. Any step you'd make as a mayor for another attorney has to be a step down. I'm sorry.[681.66][681.66](Applause)
Next up is, is it Eileen or Aileen Lewis?
What's that?
Sorry.
Aileen.
Aileen, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I'm going to make this real quick. I'm from the city of Elsmere, Kentucky. I grew up there. I won't tell you how old I am. I grew up down the street from Bill Howard, and I see a few of you graduates from Lloyd. I'm here on behalf of Frank Wickman to mention to you about the man that I know. I've had the pleasure of knowing Frank Wickman for many, many, many years. We were both a lot younger, and I was a lot smaller. Instead of being five feet, I was actually almost a size five. We met back in the seventies, the seventy timeframe. I was employed at the Northern Kentucky Community Action Commission, and at that time, Frank was associated with the Legal Aid Society. Since that time, we've continued with our communications. I have contacted Frank in regard to many legal matters, both personally for myself and my family, as well as professionally. Last year, I became involved with a volunteer group of concerned citizens in the city of Elsmere, where the opportunity was presented to us to take ownership of a cemetery with many of our ancestors. We're in the same area. I know this is all about Erlanger, but we're in the same region. If we don't work together, we're going to perish. Long, short story, we reached a point where we needed legal representation. Of course, I thought of and contacted Frank. We met with him, presented our dilemma, and Frank came on board. This has continued for many, many months. Frank has supported, represented us at hearings with judges, attended our monthly, annual meetings, communiques, and graciously assisted wherever legal input is required. As we cleared some hurdles and addressed issues, the group's direction started to come to focus. We need to develop a budget. As we started to generate income along with bills, we needed to look ahead for outstanding invoices. Our legal fees were the first thing on our agenda. We held a meeting with Frank to find out where we were, how we needed to move forward, what would be involved, and how much did we owe for services to date. Frank attended our meeting, invoice in hand, and presented the services, the hours, the amount to date.
One minute.
With the final summary total being pro bono, no charge. After the brief moment it took us to all absorb what we just heard and recover from the great news, we applaud the thoughtfulness and dedication to our cause, and remain appreciative of his support. Over the many years, I have found Frank Wickman to be an individual who does not have a personal agenda, but one who is concerned about doing what is right legally and ethically. Thank
Next up is Bill Shire.
Thank you. I came up tonight to speak primarily as an Erlanger resident and taxpayer since the early nineteen-seventies, but secondarily, as a former city administrator of Erlanger for over eighteen years. And that leads to my primary point. I had the, aside from considering Frank a friend, having great respect for him as a person, for the reasons that many people have spoken about, I had the opportunity to work directly with Frank in a city, in a professional capacity, on behalf of the city for all those years. I found that he never had a personal agenda that he tried to push. He simply tried to give the best legal advice he possibly could to keep the city on the right path. He, uh, never did anything that was, um, not in the best interests of the city, uh, and he went out of his way to make sure that he was always keeping the best interests of the city in mind. Beyond that, I came to know that he was one of the most respected municipal attorneys in the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Uh, he certainly has lived his life here, has dedicated fifty years of his life to, uh, direct service to the city of Erlanger, but he has put his heart and soul into this city. So, here's my problem with the current situation. I recognize that, uh, mayors have the right to appoint their own person, and I understand that. But as a taxpayer and a resident, uh, who cares about my city, it, in my mind, it is clearly not in the best interests of the citizens and the businesses of Erlanger to release a person who has the, the tenure and the reputation and the knowledge and the commitment that Frank Wickman has and has proven for this city. It may be of best interest for you, Mayor, to have your own team in place, and I understand that. But as far as the best interests of the citizens and the businesses of Erlanger, as far as I'm concerned, it is absolutely a poor decision and not in the best interest to release a person who has that much to give and that much proven service to the city. And I guess I'll just stop there.[1012.70][1012.70](Applause)
Next up is Daniel Murray. And the next name after that is Pat Sullivan.
On deck. Be careful. Mayor, I want to give you this note. It's for you and all the city, uh, councilwomen.
All right.
Women.
You start talking.
Yeah, don't forget them. I'll be brief. I'm the City Attorney of Mill, Commissioner, and, uh, when we read in the paper about, uh, the statement you put in there about Frank, who I find to be one of the most honest and knowledgeable people I know, we were worried about, uh, whether we have anything to worry about in our city, whether, you know, it, it seemed like there was some issues, and we'd like you to share them with us. And, uh, you can call our city administrator, Jill Bailey, and, and give her a heads up, so we'll know where we stand at. I appreciate your time. I'm not trying to get into your business with anything whatsoever.
All right, thank you.[1094.83][1094.83](Applause) Pat Sullivan?
I don't know.
And the next person is Bill Steimer, after Pat.
My name is Pat Sullivan, and I am the longtime secretary of the Erlanger Lions Club. And as far as Frank is concerned, Frank has worked diligently for our club and every aspect of our club. He's, he, his legal expertise has come, has benefited our club many times. And anyone that has the football program and the cheer program that we have, we really need to rely on Frank for the things that he comes forward with, especially when he helped us with the taxes like he did with Florence. He saved us somewhere around between ninety, one hundred thousand dollars that we've spent within this community. And Frank, like with Florence, never charged a dime. Frank's been in the club for thirty-four years, and he's done these things over and over for us. He's a valuable member. He's an outstanding man, and I think Frank deserves better than this. I'm proud to call Frank
Finally?
My name is Bill Steimer. I live at thirty-four, twenty-six Misty Creek Drive. I've lived there for forty-three years. I've taken advantage of the use of the police, the fire, the public works, but most especially, the city council and Mr. Frank Wickman. I lived there during the time when Covington was trying to annex us. A lot of you people don't know anything about it, but half of Erlanger, as we know it today, as well as half of Edgewood and parts of Fort Wright, were, Covington attempted to annex us. And if it wasn't for the mayor and the council, and especially Frank Wickman, who guided a group of citizens from these three cities to quell this annexation, I'd be living in Covington. And when I bought my house, I intended to live in Erlanger. I was born and raised in Newport, and I want no part of either one of them.[1244.71][1244.71](Laughter/Applause) I just want to thank Frank Wickman for all he did for the citizens of Erlanger in
Next up is Gary Edmondson. And the next one after that is Juanita Ray.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I'm here in support of Frank, but principally, I'm here because of my background. As many of you know, I've been practicing law now for over forty-two years. Uh, during that forty-two years, I have often sought the counsel and advice of Frank, who is indeed the dean of our municipal attorneys. I've been practicing municipal law for all those forty-two years, uh, and of course, was the city, or the county attorney for the last twenty-one years. But when I saw, and have heard again, repeated tonight, uh, the reasons for the discharge, or at least the, the reason for why, uh, the mayor, uh, you think it's appropriate to point someone to your team, uh, that simply is a misunderstanding of the law and of the role of a city attorney. A city attorney, his client is the city. His client is not the mayor. His client is not the city council. His client is the city, and he should and must act on behalf of the city at all times. And very often, a city attorney will criticize his mayor and council, tell them things they don't want to hear, both publicly and privately. I sued the county judge once, um, and, uh, I had threatened to sue the fiscal court because they weren't following the law. And that's the job of the city attorney. He is not a member of a team. Um, he is to give the best legal advice that he can, and I know full well that Frank can do that better than anybody. And, um, I urge you and the council to simply rethink that position. Uh, you can have all the administrators and the council that you want, but the city attorney represents the city, uh, and not a leadership team. Thank you.[1389.33][1389.33](Applause)
Hi, I'm Juanita Ray. Um, I'm, there's nothing more I can say good about Frank, so I'm going to leave it at that. I'm not going to repeat. Um, I think you need to rethink your decision.
Next up is Larry Ray.
Frank Wickman is a honorable, loyal citizen of this city, and as far as I'm concerned, you got a good backstabbing. Thank you.[1434.45][1434.45](Applause)
Excuse me on this one. Phil? Is it, uh...
Phil Cowherd.[1450.11][1450.11](Laughter)
Oh, my God, that's hilarious.
Tom Pharaoh.
Oh, wow. How does he not know Phil?
Tom Pharaoh.
Does anybody not know he would?
I work for the Wickman Grocery Store. Before most everybody in this room was born. And I'll tell you, I've known Frank for sixty years. I knew his brother, the judge, his father and his mother, and this family has been a real asset to this wonderful city. He's been the city attorney for forty, forty-nine years and is highly respected, and he is the dean of municipal lawyers and city lawyers in this whole state. That's how good he is. And I can prove that in a minute with objective evidence, if you'll wait a minute. Now, this guy, he cares. He's compassionate, and he has courage, Bill. He'll do what he thinks is right, even if you want to rip his head off. And that's the kind of man we need as a lawyer in this city. He has two daughters, and guess what? They practice here, not in Covington, sir, but in Erlanger, Kentucky. He's old school. He calls them in his season. He'll do the right thing, and he's willing to suffer the consequences for his courage. Three, three resolutions were enacted praising him, two thousand and six, two thousand and nine, two thousand and fourteen. And they even named the conference room for him. You ever heard of the Wickman Room? It's right around the corner. Now, I haven't lived here very long.[1575.99][1575.99](Laughter) Seventy-seven years, but let me tell you, this is a special city. It's a spiritual place, Bill.
We got one minute left.
And...
Oh, I don't think you're going to shut him off.
It's so, you tell him.
Mr. Mayor, my influence is shape, and I have three minutes, and I'll give my three minutes to the...
And I won't take them all.[1606.78][1606.78](Laughter)
That's, unfortunately, that's not how it works.
But let me just tell you, Erlanger is so different from so many other cities. They do what they think is right. They don't put themselves first, and we've had so few problems in Erlanger, and one of the reasons is, the biggest reason, because of Frank Wickman.[1630.42][1630.42](Applause) I mean that!
Got ten seconds.
And let me tell you this. If Erlanger had a great past, which it did, and you let this future be without Frank, there's going to be like Villa Hills.[1653.33][1653.33](Laughter/Applause)
All right. That's our time.
And there will be, there will be...
Our next speaker is Larry Klein.
War. And let me just tell you this. You can look at this. This is from the president of the Municipal Attorneys Association of Kentucky.
Larry, you're up next.
And I've got extra copies. Anybody who wants to see them, meet me. Thank you so
Mr. Klein? Larry Klein? Next up after that is Diane Brown.
Mayor and council members, my name is Larry Klein. Thank you for the opportunity here tonight to stand up for Frank Wickman and stand up for Erlanger. I'm here as a former Erlanger resident of twenty-three years, a former Erlanger city council member and Board of Adjustments member. Most importantly, I'm here tonight as a friend of Erlanger and a friend and admirer of Frank Wickman. I'm here with a heavy heart of sadness, but I have a request to make to reverse this action. Frank is a lifelong Erlanger resident. His parents own a business here. He and his family own a business here, and the only thing he's committed to, more than this community that I know of, is his faith in his family. I'm confident you'll hear nothing but good tonight about Frank Wickman, because that's a simple truth and common knowledge in this community. Frank has been Erlanger's faithful and dedicated city attorney for fifty years, but now terrible wrong has been committed against Frank and his good name. The only way to describe how Frank has been treated is to say that he's been kicked to the curb, along with his career, without a single word of explanation, after fifty solid and unquestioned years of service to Erlanger citizens. It is not right. It is not wrong. It is, it is wrong. It's not the Erlanger way. That is offensive not only to Frank and his family, but anyone with a sense of decency. That's not how anyone should be treated. I've committed my life to better government, and I love Erlanger, so my heart bleeds for you. This conflict that now exists is unnecessary. I mean no disrespect to you, Mr. Mayor, uh, but the conflict is not good for the city, Frank Wickman, and certainly not Erlanger. People like Frank Wickman are special. He is not a political punching bag. He's a man who's dedicated his life to this... He's a man who's dedicated his life to this community. I'm hopeful this action is reversed and Frank's service to Earlanger residents continues, and an apology is forthcoming to him and his family by those who have started this unfortunate chapter in Earlanger's otherwise great example of citizen government. I'm proud and honored to stand by Frank Wickman tonight, and I think everyone else in this room is too. Thank you.
My name is Diane Brown. I live at 4158 Farmwood Court in Earlanger. I've lived in Earlanger with my husband Jim for almost 20 years. Jim apologizes that he cannot be here. He is out of town this evening. We became actively involved in the city about 10 years ago and have worked in various volunteer activities. Additionally, Jim has been on city council for two terms, and I have served the city of Earlanger as the representative to the Kenton County Planning Commission for six years. During that time, I have been to countless city council meetings and activities. The Earlanger city attorney is an integral position, playing a significant role in having Earlanger government run smoothly. The city attorney does not provide his opinion on any issue. He does not propose legislation. He does not promote a personal agenda. The city attorney makes sure that the city council adheres to their municipal duties and in a manner mandated by the city and state. This is not a large field of practice. Few attorneys go into this field. Frank Wickman has embodied these characteristics for 49 years and more. We are fortunate that he has chosen to do so for the city of Earlanger. We are additionally fortunate that Mr. Wickman lives in Earlanger and has his private practice here in Earlanger. Due to Mr. Wickman's knowledge, the city has been able to save money on its legal services. Mr. Wickman is able to answer questions without hours of research. He is able to draft ordinances and legislation with less new research than other attorneys because of his familiarity with municipal law. During his first term on council, Jim had the pleasure of attending the Kentucky League of Cities training for newly elected officials with Mr. Wickman. Attorneys from across the state came to see Mr. Wickman, to thank him for questions answered, for advice given, or to ask new questions. They told horror stories of the quagmires their cities were in that Mr. Wickman has helped keep Earlanger out of. Part of what makes Earlanger the friendship city is that we can disagree on the issues and still respect each other at the end of the night.
One minute remaining.
Even tonight, Mr. Wickman has corrected procedure several times and was cited by a council member as a valuable person to help train new mayors. There is nothing that Mr. Wickman does that isn't to the betterment of this city. His seat is not one that can be easily filled, and it shouldn't be. What has been frustrating in this process has been to not know why he has been let go from his contract. I do believe that tonight, we heard from the mayor that it is a mayor's prerogative to replace that position. Simply knowing that a month or two ago would have eliminated much of the quagmire Earlanger now finds itself in. Thank you.
Next up is Ruth Brown.
Hi, this is Ruth Brown, and I'm here to say that Earlanger needs Frank Wickman.
Linda Schaefer. No, no, no. You have three minutes.
Thank you for this opportunity, and I think it has all been said. And I was sitting here thinking that we all want the best, not only for Earlanger, but in our personal lives, and I was thinking, personal finances, roofing, plumbing, you always want the best person. We have it. And I am from northern Kentucky. I grew up in northern Kentucky, went to Dixie, and I can remember your mentioning things, Nat Meyer Drug Store, Community Bank, Earlanger Hardware Store, and I remember going to those places as a child, and the Wickman Grocery, the Kneec Grocery. So I'm thinking, you want the best in every aspect of your life, and especially for the city, so why wouldn't you keep the best? You have it. And thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Did you have something?
I've had some people that could not attend tonight that wrote me letters that they would like to...
We still have three more members on the list here.
Okay, when they're finished, I would like to read that correspondence.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmen. I'm not a native of this area, but I came here as an Air Force recruiter, and when retiring from Wright-Patterson, I elected to remain in the city of Earlanger and getting acquainted with Attorney Wickman through working on the code board and felt like it was my civic duty to make that contribution. And working and living in several cities and states around the country, I've found that Earlanger is a good place to be, and we've elected to be here. And so, working with the city and the code board, and I feel like in the interest and continuity of the city that we remain, and it's just like it's been alluded to in some of the other remarks of us being dragged through the publicity meat grinder, if you will, and we need to avoid that. And as a former broadcast journalist, I have covered several meetings such as this and have seen a lot of the activities that have taken place, and I just feel like it's in the best interest of this city to remain on a smooth course that we've been traveling down since I've been living here. We came here in '91 as an Air Force recruiter and then retiring from Wright-Patt and elected to remain here in the city of Earlanger. Thank you very much, Council.
Bob Karen and Sheri Karen's after that.
I'm an attorney. I represented the city of Elsmer, your neighbor, for, I don't know, 25 or 30 years, a long, long time. When I started representing the city of Elsmer, I have to admit it now, Frank was the city attorney for Earlanger before me. We argued for decades. I tried to convince Frank that I was the senior city attorney in Kent County, and he said, "Oh, no, I was there before you." Frank, you were right, and I'm really glad you were. I relied upon his knowledge, his experience, his wisdom, and I also relied, Mayor, upon knowing absolutely for certain that if I was off base in the law, Frank would tell me. Even though we became friends, we are associates in the practice of law, which I consider to be an honor in the practice of law with Frank Wickman, I knew that he would steer me the way he thought the law was, and I knew that the chances were virtually 100% -- well, I have to say that I found it to be 100% -- that he was right. There were times we disagreed, not very many, but he was right and I was wrong, and I have to admit that too. Now, when I was the city attorney for Elsmer, my goal in representing Elsmer was to answer each question as the attorney for the city, not as some attorney who would give my mayor -- and I served under several mayors -- give my mayor the answer my mayor wanted, the city's mayor wanted, for his or her agenda, but to give the correct answer in the law.
We've got one minute left.
Because my goal, Mayor, was that the city of Elsmer would be one of the cities in Kenton County that wasn't in the newspaper, and we weren't. There's one city that's been better, and that's your city, Mayor, Earlanger. Frank has kept you out of the newspaper. That means he's kept you out of the kind of litigation that can cost thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars, and you need that. Warren Buffett just recently gave young men the following advice, young men such as yourself. I may very well have been a lawyer longer than you.
Fifteen seconds.
Sir, I'm grinding down. And the advice that he gave the young men on their career path was, surround yourself with the most experienced and most intelligent men and women you can find and who are willing and not afraid to argue with you. You have the kind of man. You won't get one better. I know all of the municipal-type lawyers in northern Kentucky won't find one better.
All right, Sheri.
Sheri Karen, I'm here to speak on behalf of Frank Wickman regarding my experience as the mayor of the city of Covington. The last two years have been difficult in the city of Covington. We had a difficult commission, and myself and my staff were struggling with the conflict that those personalities caused. In trying to find help, the only person we could think of to call on was Frank Wickman because of his knowledge of the law and especially city law. We knew we had to do something, but we wanted to do it following proper procedure. And it was through talking with Frank that we really just had to stay the course and do the right thing and not be brought down to a lower level, that we needed to keep the reputation of our city as a priority. And that's what for the last two years I've done, is to keep my city, the image of my city, the people in my city, and the staff of my city, and their morale as a priority. And Mayor Hermes, I request, I ask, for your benefit, for your council's benefit, for your city's benefit, for your employees' benefit, that you reconsider your decision because I'm afraid that if you do not, the next four years, you're going to find yourself in such deep turmoil that as time goes on, it's going to get deeper and deeper. And I know for my city, the morale of your employees really has to be a priority because it affects the services that are provided to the city, and I'm hoping that you will reconsider. Frank, as my husband said, he is just an exceptional man, and that intuitive knowledge that he brings, something that in my city, we need almost on a weekly basis, that intuitive knowledge comes up all the time. Frank has that, and I think you will find yourself at a loss without Frank being there. So please reconsider. Thank you.
Ms. Sue Camp, I understand that there might be a couple more people in the crowd that didn't get to sign up.
Well, no, these people could not attend tonight.
We've got a text from Missy.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought...
Is it okay if we have a couple more people?
Sure, absolutely.
Is there anybody that would like to speak that is not on the list? Do you mind, please, stating your name?
My name is Jim Gronfeld. I served on city council here for almost 10 years with many of the current council members, certainly with Frank Wickman. I came over from where I live now in Delhi. Wild horses wouldn't keep me from this meeting tonight. I think that we've all heard what kind of person Frank Wickman is. Most of us here know from experience what kind of person Frank Wickman is, and we realize what a valuable asset he is to the city. It's a shame that the mayor doesn't seem to have that same vision. I have to question, Mayor, your wisdom. The most important thing that's been said here tonight is that the city attorney does not serve you, he does not serve the council, he serves the people of Earlanger, just as the council and the mayor serves the people of Earlanger. In my 10 years on city council, I do not ever remember more people being present at a council meeting, regardless of any issue. In my 10 years on council, we never had issues that were brought to the fore like this. I think you need to remember who you were elected to serve, Mayor, the people of Earlanger, and the people of Earlanger are best served by keeping Frank Wickman as their city attorney. Thank you.
Sir, do you mind stating your name?
My name is Bill Martin. I live on Theodore Place in Earlanger. I've been a resident of the city of Earlanger for 62 years. I know I'm not quite that old, but... I served as fire chief here and served as your fire marshal and fire inspector for a number of years, ending up last year with 44 years. Many years, I dealt with Frank Wickman on legal arguments, legal decisions that involved the fire department. I always found Frank's judgment to be very good in the areas that I dealt with. In all the years I dealt with him, I know that he gets a retainer from the city, and all the time that I spent with him, and probably monthly meetings, and all the time there, I don't know that he's ever submitted an invoice in excess of what the retainer that he was already receiving from the city for this extra time that he spent. I think sometimes this gets down to be a financial decision, and I think there's more to the finances than what you see. He could have billed many times for things that we were involved in, and he did not do that. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to come forward?
I would like to say hello.
All right.
And I'd love to come here to go to Frank Wickman.
Please come up to the microphone so we can all hear.
I have a loud voice. I can reload the microphone. I'm a little bit here, we'll balance for that.
If you wouldn't mind stating your name.
My name is Tanya Ritchie. I live at 562 Earlanger Road, and I've been a resident of Earlanger for 47 years. I'm up here not in pro or con of Frank Wickman's case. There's never been a problem with the city attorney, so he's never come to be cause, to be forefront with me. My problem is with you. I made the mistake and voted for you. Now, rumor has it that you ball-faced lied to us during the election. You lied to my parents. You told us Commonwealth Station, it was printed in the papers, would be nixed. Why is it on the agenda for tonight if it's going to be nixed? I have personal contacts with the railroad. Nobody has talked to you. So if you could provide us with a name and number so that I can prove that they are not speaking the truth, I would greatly appreciate it. And I've also heard from a little bird that this gentleman that you've hired as our city attorney was a major benefactor to your campaigning. So is our tax dollars paying for your campaign now by hiring this gentleman? And I've also heard a rumor that this gentleman is a major person that played in all the stuff that went on in Villa Hills. Can you defraud any of these rumors? Thank you. That answers it for us.
Thank you. Come to the mic, please. This gentleman's already spoken.
I'd like to know where you take the lessons from, Mike Martin, Villa Hills, or Dan Jackson, or Mark Hill. You know, a couple loose cannons that screwed those cities up. Like what you're going to try to do here?
If you wouldn't mind stating your name, sir? Go ahead.
My name is Greg Sandel. I've been affiliated with this city for like 30 years. I promised my wife I wouldn't get involved, but I can't stand it anymore. I was a police chief here for a long time. I was on the police department for 30 years. I served on council with a lot of people here also. Everybody here has told you about Frank Wickman. I've probably taken up more of his time with the city than anybody that's ever been here. We had some problems on the police department, and Frank and I had a lot of discussions. We had some problems on the police department, and Frank and I had a lot of discussions. But I'm well aware with how city government works. And I know that you have the ability to do just about whatever you want to do within reason. I know you can hire and you can fire. I've been a city resident for a long time. My whole family live here. I hope, like some of the other people said here, that you will take this under consideration and realize that you probably have the best person that you could possibly have sitting real close to you. And allow him to stay here and influence some of your decisions as long as he wants to. He will never steer you wrong. He's very conservative. He kept me in line for a long time. And if you follow his direction, you'll have a good run here at the city of Earlanger. I agree with some of the other people. I've been here, and I've probably been to more council meetings than anybody in this room, with the exception of maybe a couple. And I've never seen this kind of turnout as long as I've been here. So I hope that you'll take all this under consideration and possibly alter your decision. I know that you don't have to, but I hope you'll take the citizens of Earlanger and your best judgment and do something different.
Thank you. All right. Patty? Oh, Patty, excuse me. Thank you.
We have a couple of people that could not attend this evening, one of which is our retired city clerk, Wilma La Bear. I'm sure you all... Oh, I'm sorry.
I've never had anybody ever ask me to use a mic. I had fully intended to attend tonight's council meeting to speak on Frank's behalf. However, since I am sick, I am afraid to attend for fear of infecting others at the meeting. I have worked with Frank in my role as city clerk, also as police clerk, court clerk, sorry. I found him to be invaluable with his advice at both levels. He served as prosecuting attorney while I was police court clerk, and my husband was the police court judge. I am sure that if Paul were here, he would proclaim Mr. Wickman's advice to be accurate and to the point. I am sure that he is deeply hurt to be fired from his hometown city as our attorney. Now I would like to address you, Mr. Mayor. I am sure that by this one action, there are citizens out there who voted for you who would like to rescind their votes right now. I know it is impossible, but they can do it in four years when it's time for your reelection. And she gives her phone number that you can call her. Sincerely, Wilma La Bear, retired city clerk. The next letter that I received was Colonel Kenneth Yaden retired. If any of you remember that name. Kenny was our police chief mayor. I think the new mayor has shot himself in the foot. Without getting on my Kentucky soapbox and ranting on, I want to do, I'll just say, Earlanger without Wickman is like a banana split without the banana. Finally, firing someone after 50 years of service without giving any reason is just about the dumbest thing anyone in public office could do. You don't fire someone just because you can. I worked for the city of Earlanger for 35 years on the police department and council and never saw that action, not even one time. That time was spent working on several mayors and CAOs. None of them ever fired anyone without giving a reason. If this major decision was done in the first month of his term, I hate to think what he'll do in the next four years. God help the city of Earlanger. The next letter that I received was Candace, from Candace Eagle Gray. Dear council members, it is my understanding that your legislative body is considering whether to contractually employ the services of Frank Wickman as city solicitor for the city of Earlanger. I write on Frank's behalf to highly recommend you his services. I have served with Frank on the Board of Directors for the Municipal Attorneys Association of Kentucky for the past few years and have known him previously over the 10 years I have served as city attorney here in Lebanon. Knowing Frank to be both experienced and respected member of the municipal bar, Frank has literally been the lifeblood of MAAK for many years. He is a frequent contributor to the city attorney listserv through Kentucky League of Cities, and any city would be fortunate to call upon Frank for counsel. With best regards, Candace Eagle Gray, Attorney at Law. And last, but certainly not least, is a letter from Frank Warnock. He is an attorney at law in Bellevue. My friend Frank Wickman is without a doubt the best municipal attorney in northern Kentucky, if not the Commonwealth. His experience is only exceeded by his professionalism, kindness, wisdom, and knowledge. I met Frank about 20 years when I was a city attorney of Bellevue, Kentucky. I began attending the Local Government Committee of Northern Kentucky Bar. Frank was the chairperson for that committee. It soon became apparent to me that I needed Frank Wickman's help and guidance. He was and is "the man" in quotes when it comes to municipal law. Every time I have called on Frank for his input and assistance, he has been there. We call each other with legal questions and ideas. I am a much better negotiator because I have received the better end of that arrangement. After many years of voluntary service, Frank said he had enough of being chairperson of the local government committee. I stepped up and was named chairperson and have served in that capacity for the past several years. The best and brightest local government attorneys meet once a month to discuss the law, share information, and gossip. In many of those meetings, those members turn to Frank for advice and guidance. Local government attorneys throughout the Commonwealth, they ask each other for legal assistance, pardon me, on the Kentucky League of Cities listserv. More often than not, Frank answers the question first and nails it. He has volunteered to service as executive director of the Municipal Attorneys Association for many years. So it is with great sadness that I learn that Frank's run in Earlanger may be ending. I hope that will not turn out to be the case. I try and stay out of others' affairs and take a standoff approach to getting involved in city politics because lord knows I have my own issues to deal with in Covington. Frank is so proud of his affiliation and service to Earlanger. He often reminds me that he has been at or near the same place for what seems like an eternity and does not have a desire to go anywhere else. He is not a part of Earlanger. And to finish up the letter, it says, "I ask that the city of Earlanger leadership take pause and consider allowing Frank to continue as its city attorney. The citizens of Earlanger deserve the best, and Frank is just that." Frank Warnock.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next, we've got general comments. First on the list here is Diane Brown.
We've got two other issues here.
I'm sorry, can I first ask whether this will also be my time to comment on Commonwealth Station?
Are you on the Commonwealth Station?
Or is that a separate public speaking moment?
That'll be a separate item.
Without hearing the entire meeting, my comments at the moment are simply that city council's public comment for citizens at the end of each meeting is actually for more of a town hall style. It is not a question and answer, but it is the time that citizens have to voice their grievances. That is what this time is reserved for. It is reserved exactly for that place, and it is put at the end of each agenda. Those comments often get referred then to become committee meetings to be discussed by city council. If this is not when people voice their grievances, then when do they get to voice grievances? I understand that it is not a town hall question and answer, but it is, however, provided as the time for citizens to comment on what they've heard during the meeting or on what bothers them, what concerns them, and what they wish to see changed in their city. Thank you.
I wanted to make a statement regarding Frank Wickman while we were still talking about Frank Wickman. Can I go ahead and do that?
Sure.
I'm up here for two reasons. A couple of things I want to clarify first. Bill, when you spoke earlier, as usual, we agree to disagree, but many of us did not want to see Mayor Hermes fail. I just want that clarified. Most of us did not think Todd Whitaker was a mistake either. We were very thrilled that he was picked, and we did not think that was a mistake. So I just wanted to clarify that. Mayor, also on your mayor's report, you said that you were looking forward to working with Frank. And you really did not want to fire him, but you felt you needed to go a different direction. However, in November on our one-on-one, back then you told me you were going to fire Frank. So that just contradicts what you told us, so I'm not really sure what that means. I'm up here for two reasons. One, on behalf of Frank, and two, on behalf of city council. I can't go to Kroger's, I can't open my email without people emailing me about all the controversy going on in our city. There have been many misconceptions, and I have many mutual friends with our mayor. And one of the things I hear a lot of is, why can't you guys work with him? He says you're being difficult. And I want to explain and clarify some of these misconceptions. First of all, we do not meet behind closed doors. We all live by the ordinances that we pass, the same as the residents do. We have our council meetings the first Tuesday of each month. Our discussions or disagreements on issues are handled in our committee meetings. Those are held the third Tuesday of the month. They are advertised, and they are open to the public. So we are transparent. We just don't do it on television. We also have not raised taxes the last couple of years. In the past year, we actually have lowered them. The election was November 4th. Barely half voted for a new, barely, more than half voted for our new mayor. Whether they wanted to change or believe some of the misinformation they heard during elections, it really doesn't matter. It's over. We all have moved on, and we all moved on in November. The city is our number one priority. However, as recently as last week, the mayor is still campaigning against us, and that makes it very hard. When I first started on council in January of 2007, I, along with two other new council members and a new mayor, started our journey here.
You've got 30 seconds.
I don't think council members have the three minutes. In 2007, in our January budget meeting, we had a team-building session. This was awesome and a great way to start off with so many new people. But we have not been able to do that because he only wants to have one-on-one meetings with us. In mine, he stated that he wanted six of us gone. He wants a six-person council, not 12. He also stated he wanted to see more controversy. This he has succeeded in. Even with this said, I agreed to disagree because I wanted to work with this mayor. I want our city to succeed. Many of us have reached out to him on several occasions. I told him, for him to succeed, he needs us, and for us to succeed, we need him. We have now had four meetings, which go fine right up until we disagree. And then, well, you can just watch them on television. We do not like fighting. It does no one any good. But when you come here brand-new and tell us no to an ordinance we've been working on for many years, you should not expect us to just roll over. If we did, this would mean that the years we've worked on this meant nothing, that we didn't believe in ourselves. A mayor who has definitely started off on the wrong foot needs Frank Wickman, the best of the best. People, including attorneys all over the state, call him for advice on municipal law. He has been here his entire life and has every reason to do what's right for the city. He is vested here. He does not have to share anyone's vision. We trust him, bottom line, and he deserves respect. In closing, I'd like to point out that we are one of the lowest-paid councils in the tri-state, especially for a city this size, because we believe 12 works. We are 12 strong council members from all areas of the city with all different visions of the city, and that is okay. We will agree with each other and we will agree to disagree. Earlanger has always been known to think outside the box, and we welcome our two new council members and look forward to working with them and hearing their new ideas. We are not a group of Democrats. We are not a group of Republicans, and we are not going to be Tea Party either. We are here to serve, protect our citizens, and we need Frank Wickman Associates' expertise to help us continue to find ways to improve our city. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to speak as well, if I could.
All right, Randy.
Thank you.
I would ordinarily do it from here, but we seem to have a president who's going to play it. Leave the desk. I've walked out of depositions with microphones attached to me, too, so... As you can probably tell from the ordinances I've introduced tonight, I strongly disagree with our mayor on his decision to terminate Frank Wickman's employment, his service contract with the city. We've heard at least tonight, by my count, from eight different attorneys, talking about Frank Wickman's skill and his virtue and his ethics. I'll make it nine, because I wish to talk about Frank as well. His knowledge of municipal law is unsurpassed, and he has represented this city for nearly 50 years with great skill and ability. Through his skill, through his advice, through his wisdom, he has saved this city countless dollars in enabling us to avoid litigation. Now, some of us engage in litigation on a daily basis, don't we, Mr. Tolliver? And we know that that's not always the best thing to do. And when we're representing this city, it's best to stay out of it. He has enabled us to do that. Unlike many cities in northern Kentucky, you've not seen Earlanger dragged into the news or dragged into the courts, and that is to Mr. Wickman's benefit and praise. I've spoken with several attorneys. We've heard from several of them tonight who have always talked about Frank Wickman and his knowledge of municipal law. We have this letter here from Scott Campbell, who's the president of the Municipal Attorneys Association, and he says that Frank's knowledge is unsurpassed. I've not heard anybody say anything to the contrary. Lynda Tally Smith, who's the Commonwealth attorney for Boone County, has written, Frank Wickman is the city of Earlanger. Having served as a city attorney myself, I know for a fact that there is no one that knows municipal law better than Frank Wickman. That is without dispute. And we heard from Frank Warnock's letter as well. He's city attorney for Covington. He's a very fine attorney, represented that city for a number of years, and his respect for Frank speaks volumes. Our citizens have likewise expressed their admiration for Frank, their desire to retain him as council. We've heard from 27 people, by my count, tonight, and I think we've probably got a couple hundred more here that share the sentiment, because we certainly heard nothing to the contrary. I have a letter here from a citizen as well, Jennifer Drake Grisel. She is unable to be here tonight, but she asked me to give you her thoughts. She has written, "I am shocked and disgusted at the conduct of our new mayor. Mr. Hermes has attempted to stop progress by trying to derail the Commonwealth Station project. Now he wants to fire Mr. Wickman, an experienced city attorney with no explanation. The mayor's refusal to give any reason makes his behavior and motives appear shady. During his campaign, Mr. Hermes complained about the lack of transparency with city officials. It appears Mr. Hermes fails to practice what he preaches." She concludes by asking council to support Mr. Wickman and continue retaining him as our attorney. Now Frank has served this city, six different mayors of this city, of varying political persuasions, various political ideologies, and he's done so without any difficulty. And we've heard the advice he's given the city has been good. Despite this history of the stellar work which saved the city a significant amount of money, Mr. Mayor, you announced on February 5, your decision to terminate Frank's contract with the city. Thus far, I've not yet heard a reason for why that decision's been made. When the decision was first announced, several council members asked for a meeting, a joint meeting of all council. meeting of all council, to discuss the reasons. The mayor refused to meet with council as a whole. He said he would meet with us one-on-one or in small groups, but for some reason, he did not want to meet with us as a group. Now, I and many other council members declined to meet with him one-on-one or in small groups, and I did so for my specific reasons. First off, we feel that the city's business should be done openly and in a transparent manner, like you said you would do during the campaign. You've not done that. We should not be talking about something as significant as the termination of a 50-year person in secret. Also, I objected to this one-on-one meeting because the city has great, the public of the city has great interest in this decision. I think that's evidenced by the fact that we have so many people here tonight. It would be wrong to hide that behind closed doors. And meeting with the mayor in small groups or individually creates the risk that he could give one reason to one person and a different reason to somebody else. It would prohibit council members from questioning whether the mayor's rationale is accurate or truthful. We've heard from the mayor that at least six members of this council want Mr. Wickman gone. I did not believe that when you first told it to me, and I don't believe it now. Now, I met with you one-on-one shortly after the election, before I learned my lesson not to do that, and that was on November 20. And you wanted to discuss, you wanted to discuss your plans for the city. I was glad to hear them, but I was dismayed when I heard one of the decisions you had made was that you wanted to replace Frank Wickman as city attorney. At that point, you'd not worked with Frank. You knew nothing about Frank. You certainly could not have reached any reasoned decision that his work was subpar or somehow in need of replacement. I asked the mayor, why do we want, you want to terminate Frank Wickman? He is the best city attorney in northern Kentucky, one of the best in the entire state. Your only comment to me, your only attempt to give a reason, was that you said Frank was getting older and maybe just wasn't as sharp as he used to be. That is what you said to me. Keep in mind, at that point, the mayor had never worked with Frank Wickman, didn't know him, didn't know him at all. So that was the only reason I got out of him. Now, when the mayor explained himself to the media, he said that Frank didn't share his vision with, of the, for the city.